All right. Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am your lower Paxton Township manager. And in typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. This is a business session of the board. We have a number of items on the agenda. First, beginning under old business, the board will first take action to ratify an agreement, a buyer's agreement with RSR Realtors. Next, following, under new business, the board will take action to fill a vacancy on the lower Paxton Township Board of Auditors. After this, on the agenda is Resolution 2024-13, which amends the township's fee schedule. After that, the board will take action on Resolution 2024-14, which authorizes a submission, which authorizes the submission of a grant request to the Dolphin County TISIP grant program for the Crumbs Mill and Doane Road intersection improvement project. Following that, action to approve a declaration of restrictive covenants, this being for the Stray Winds Park improvement project with regard to stormwater management. Then, following that, the board will take action to approve application for payment number eight for the Brightville Park improvement project. Then, finally, under new business, the board will take action to adopt, or actually, rather, award a contract for the 2024 Township traffic line painting project. Then, finally, under subdivision land development, the board will approve improvement guarantees and then take action to approve the payment of township and authority bills. Here are any last announcements before finally making a motion to adjourn. With all that said, all the board members are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gottschall. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, July 16. And we'll begin with Mr. Navarro leading us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. And we need to take a look at approving the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Meetings, minutes are approved. We have time now for public comment. Public comment is for any issue that might not be on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity during that time. Sir?
William Miller, 4311 Crestview. It's related to an item on the agenda, but not specifically to that. This Crumbs Mill Road project, on each end of Crumbs Mill, as been mentioned before, the traffic signals, if you're heading towards Colonial Road, heading east, people sit there, sit there, and sit there. There's no dedicated left, and then they have to fly out through the intersection. And I'm sure the township knows that there's instances there. And on the same vein, when they did the new traffic light down by the Blue Ridge Plaza, there's no dedicated left turn signal, but there's a dedicated one on the opposite side. I don't know how this happened, but with the traffic and the volume and all these things, I'm not saying put in all new lights, but you know, the timing could, for the time being, the cheap route is to alter that timing a little bit, even every other cycle, to give a guy a catch a break, especially during those peak hours, you know, three to six. I will note that, and it's too big, you guys can only like take a three JPEGs or something in a file in your cashier. There was a 2005 study done by PennDOT. Recommendation was the light intersection improvement central drive. The complete redoing of the intersection there at where they hit the pole, the big lanyard pole there at Devonshire and Colonial, to widen that and to take that one property or part thereof, because actually, the house and the doctor's office, the property lines out, kind of out into the road. And then to realign Winfield, and we talked about this one before, Winfield and Valley, that's why the marquee for the church has been put back up into to allow that to curve back down in and allow those people to gain their property and, of course, remove that acute angle at the Red Lobster where sometimes people, the tractor trailers get hung up. I do have a copy of the report. I'd have to somehow put it onto a thumb drive to give to you. It's 500 pages. It's no wonder it doesn't email, you know, it's huge. But you could read down through the, those recommendations that were made and never happened. And Colonial, again, is in disrepair in a lot of spots where people can't see it. And that's something we're working on to, to parallel slideshow and present it at some, at a future meeting, just so you can see what you can't see when you're driving. It's kind of rough in a couple of spots. So, that's it. Hopefully, they can do something with those lights temporarily, you know, something.
Brad, since Colonial Road is a state road, could we reach out to PennDOT and see what happened to that report as to why they didn't do some of the things that they recommended?
Yeah, sure, sure. I, as soon as we get a copy of that report, we can take a look at it.
I'd be glad to. I think I can get it onto a drive for you.
I'm sure you could.
Technologically deficient with all this new stuff, so.
You don't have to spend a whole lot of time, sir. I'm sure we can get a copy from the state, too. But if you have.
I'll get the neighbor's kid to do it.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Board member comments? Any, anything to talk about?
Isn't the intersection that Mr. Miller is talking about right up the road from the, we did our road tour, the Elizabeth, what's it called? Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Village that do 55.
Elizabeth Village Development. So aren't we anticipating a lot more traffic and definitely will have to have some adjustments in our traffic lights and whatnot?
Yeah, that's true. They'll all be part of the study.
Right, right.
A comment from, on my behalf, I went to the Capitol Council of Government meeting last night over in Hampton Township, learned a lot about the birds. You'll probably be hearing more about that in the future meetings.
Did you say birds?
Birds, yeah. There's a, there was a young lady there was president of Birdland, and birds are becoming pertinent throughout the state in terms of what they can, what they can do to eliminate insects, what type of plants can be grown to protect birds. So, we're going to take a look at that and see what it leads to. They work closely with the Audubon Society. So, that was last night. And we have managers' report?
Yes, sir, just one item. I was asked to share an exciting event that's coming up this Sunday, the 21st, which will be from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Heroes Grove. The township, in kind of annual fashion, is hosting its summer concert series. Of course, the first one this year was unfortunately rained out and has been postponed, but this first one will be July 21st, again, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., Heroes Grove. Going to be hearing some, some dance fever, which 70s, 80s, and 90s, and the latest dance hits, so it sounds very exciting, Sophia.
No 60s, huh?
No 60s, unfortunately.
Got to cut it off somewhere. No 40s.
Ms. Thompson, yes?
So, because I live in that Brightville community where they have the concerts, I have been in the Friendship Center where we have been prohibited from going into the big gym area because it's been blocked off because the outdoor concert had to come inside. So I don't understand why a concert would be canceled instead of just moved inside.
I'm not sure the answer to that. I'll have to get back to you on what that arrangement has been this year with the why, but, yeah, the why, you know, the township does have a good relationship with the why, and we have held things in there in the past, and I'll check in on that, what happened this year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all, under old business, we have action to ratify a buyer agency contract with RSR Realtors. Mr. Gottschall?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before the board this evening is an action to ratify this buyer's agency agreement or contract with RSR Realtors. This has already been signed by myself. However, the board will have to ratify it as a contract, a new contract. This contract really provides for a, I'll say, a boilerplate or a standard agreement to begin to engage the services of RSR Realtors as we consider the future of the municipal center and any other physical needs that the township may have with regard to office space or other municipal operations. So this, this allows us to engage that and gives us a relationship moving forward with those services. So it is in order at this time for the board to ratify that contract, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help answer those.
Their job is primarily to act as an advisor, an expert?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a second?
A second.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Gottschall.
Got a vote.
I thought we did vote.
We just moved and seconded.
Oh, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Going on to new business, we have an action to fill a vacancy on the lower Paxton Township Board of Auditors. We have an application from Kelly Davis. I assume everyone had an opportunity to kind of look over her credentials and qualifications. Any comments or questions before we make a motion?
Brad, I want to follow up on a question that I text you. So we have a lower Paxton Township, and could you speak a little more context about what they audit exactly?
Sure. I'd be happy to help clarify, but I think Mr. Miller may be more well-suited to answer that.
Certainly.
Chief auditor.
Ms. Thompson, the elected auditors, in some ways, is kind of an archaic piece of the township code. There are still a number of jurisdictions, exceptionally small jurisdictions throughout the state, where three elected individuals perform the entire audit for a township. In, I would say, probably at least three out of four situations, the municipality is large enough that they have an appointed auditor from a CPA firm, which we do. In those cases, the elected auditors basically meet after reorganization and can review the audit as it was, but don't actually perform any audit procedures or get compensation. They also can set a bond, if need be, and determine any compensation for working supervisors, which we don't have any here, like a roadmaster if they were on the board. So in our case, the elected auditor does very little. We meet for about an hour, we go over the audit and set the bond for the township manager and call it a day. In some jurisdictions, they are very busy performing the work of CPA firm.
So just vote for them?
Yes. It's merely just somewhat ceremonial, I guess you'd say.
Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion to appoint Kelly Davis as elected auditor for lower Paxton Township?
Oh, sorry, one more question. Kelly Davis was the only one that applied?
We have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Kelly Davis is appointed.
Another vote.
You really want to get them.
Yeah, it's true.
We want a vote.
All in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Streamlined.
That's what we did last night, too. Thank you. Kelly Davis will be appointed. We have a Resolution 2024-13 amending certain municipal fees and charges for municipal service. Adjustment for refused pricing, yeah, refused pricing and added the penalty assessment. Mr. Gottschall?
I'll actually go ahead and take that one.
Mr. Miller?
In meeting with Portnoy Law Associates to kind of prepare our accounts for transition for delinquent collection, they had made the recommendation to include the penalty provision within our fee schedule. So that inclusion is in your fee schedule as a 10% one-time penalty on outstanding delinquent balances. In, during that process, I noted that an error was made in the preparation of that resolution for the fee for garbage starting July 1st, so we went ahead and revised that as well to the current figure. Outside of that, the rest of the fee schedule remains unchanged.
So we need a resolution approved, 2024-13, amending certain fees and charges for the municipal services during the 2024 fiscal year. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, we got one. Thank you. Resolution passes. We have an action to adopt Resolution 2024-14 authorizing the submission of a Dolphin County TISIP, T-I-S-I-P, grant, which I'm sure Mr. Miller, Mr. Gottschall can tell us what TISIP is. Grant application, the amount of $359,250 for the Crumbs Mill Doane Road intersection project. Mr. Gottschall?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yes, there is some, I guess, competition among various parties as to how that is pronounced, Doane, Donnie. We've heard several, Dean. But at any rate, that, that particular stretch of road is, is now before the board for hopeful future improvements as part of the county's very, I'd say, dare I say, aggressive and innovative program to completely eliminate deficient bridges across the county, and they're almost, you know, they're, they're within a few bridges of having done so. This bridge is on the list now within the township, the Crumbs Mill Bridge. The, the bridge is at a now within the township, the Crumbs Mill Bridge. The bridge is at a point now where it's not, I don't want to cause alarm, there is no cause for alarm, however, the bridge now is at a point where it's being inspected more frequently, about every six months. It's not yet weight restricted, but that is the next step if it continues to get worse. So this is kind of a higher priority project for certainly the township and the county. It has also been, and has been placed on the tip, the long-term transportation improvement project list, which allows that project to receive additional federal funds. So Mr. Miller here will discuss the finances, but as far as the project is concerned, we're going to do a bridge replacement here, which is fairly routine. However, in discussing that bridge replacement project, we have been discussing, as noted by Mr. Miller, and certainly is kind of well documented, Crumbs Mill corridor in its entirety is in need for some pretty significant safety improvements along the entire corridor, especially at the intersection of Dean and Crumbs Mill, where it's a pretty significant site distance issue, and there's some pretty significant issues with regard to traffic safety along that intersection. So the intent here is to, in coordination with the bridge replacement, also kind of realign the intersection, making it safer for the motoring public to, you know, make turns coming from Dean onto Crumbs Mill, and hopefully eliminate any of the blind spots that occur currently. So this grant request is to the Dolphin County Transportation Infrastructure Safety Improvement Program, TISIP, and we're hopeful that we can get some funding for that, and I'll turn it over at this point to Mr. Miller to discuss the finances.
Thank you, Manager Gottschall. So in relation to the grant project, the grant for you would be for 75% of that project cost. Total project estimate is $479,000. And again, this is focused on safety within that intersection, rising intersection, pushing a little further into the path area, and greatly improving the site distance in that area, and coordinating it with the bridge project to help to maximize mobilization and minimize the physical inconvenience that's going to be caused as that major construction would be occurring. In relation to the township obligation, that would reduce that to $119,750. That is earmarked to come from our existing CIP reserves. If you recall, several years ago, when the Rescue Act funds came through, we identified an immediate match to our public safety costs incurred at recommendation of the auditors. This helped us simplify the federal reporting and claim all the ARP at one time. Then we could take those budgetary savings, put those in an investment coffer, and use them for some deferred maintenance and new initiatives. So this would come from those funds that are still retained by the township. In relation to that, as Manager Gottschall had noted, the tip is picking up predominantly all of the actual bridge costs. This multimillion dollar bridge is going to cost us in the neighborhood of about $40,000 in total. There's a long shot, but there's hope that we can discuss even bringing this piece into the puzzle and discussion of tip, but that has to be discussed with PennDOT down the road. If that's the case, then it would be fully funded through the program with the match coming from the tip provisions and reduce that even further. But this is kind of a worst-case scenario, I guess I would say, if this grant would go through and we could continue with this project in coordination with the bridge. I don't want to entertain any further questions.
Crumbs Mill is a state road?
No.
No?
No.
So how are we discussing it with PennDOT? Not for money?
Well, for money, and they, through this project, would be, they would own the project. It would be their project, and so they would be, you know, selecting the contractor and all of that. So PennDOT is intimately involved in this.
This falls under, you don't look a gift horse in the mouth, if they're going to provide the money. Mr. Miller, you had a comment?
Just have a quick question. When you, when I went down Dean one day years ago, I got to the end of Crumbs Mill and I couldn't make a left. Is that going to be resolved? You know, you'd have to bring your road out where you come to the bridge and so you can make a left-hand turn. I had to go back up to my favorite intersection on Colonial Road then and not be able to make a left there either.
That is the engineering intent, yes, sir.
Great.
Yes.
That's it.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? So we need a motion to approve adopting resolution 2024-14 authorizing the submission of a Dolphin County TISIP grant application, the amount of $359,250 for the Crumbs Mill and however you want to pronounce it intersection.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. We now have action to approve a declaration of restrictive covenants for conservation at Stray Winds Park. Once again, Mr. Gottschall?
Yes, sir. Members of the board, if you remember, a number of meetings ago, the board had adopted various contracts with regard to the Stray Winds Park Improvement Project. Again, this is another project that will be, I'll say, owned by the state, DEP, and they will be making, they have actually already made the selection on the contractor, RSR, and this is another, this is just an additional contract that we had failed to get into the packet that last time, which continues to allow for deed of declaration and things like that to formally get this project rolling. But it should be noted that when making the motion this evening, the board should do so with the condition that it is approved pending HRG approval of the final survey documents which are in this packet under exhibit B and D. So that's the only comment that we have at this point, but everything else is in order and corresponds with the actions that the board had already taken on this project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? We need a motion to approve resolution 2024-14 authorizing the file and application for a Dolphin County TISIP grant, 359,250, and the township manager's signature. So you'd be able to sign off on it?
Sure, that was actually, that was for the last agenda item. We're down to the Stray Winds. Yeah.
I thought I said that. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The last one allowed me to sign it. Yes, sir.
So we need a motion to approve action of a declaration of restrictive covenants for conservation at Stray Winds Park, as Mr. Gottschall explained.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, and the declaration passes. So now we need action to approve an application for payment number eight from Rogel Incorporated for Brightville Park Playground Project. Mr. Gottschall?
Yes, members of the board, you'll probably note the date on this letter dating back to April 16th. I'm sure as we stand today, the board is pretty aware of the Brightville Park Improvement Project. This application for payment was simply missed within the previous applications, and at this point, as you know, the project is complete, and once this application for payment is approved and things are returned to the contractor, we should soon be closing out the contract, and you will see another kind of final action item on this project. But this application for payment number eight is in the amount of $88,810.07, and like I had mentioned, is simply a result of us having missed it somewhere along the transmission. So other than that, it is in order for the board to approve this evening, and I would be happy to help answer any questions the board may have.
Was that amount 88,000? My computer kind of went nuts.
$88,810.07.
Correct.
Got you. Thank you. Okay, so with no further questions, we have a action, motion to approve the application for payment number eight from Rogel for Brightville Park Playground, amount of $88,810.07. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passed. Thank you. Now we have to approve action for an award of a contract for the 2024 Traffic Line Painting Project. Mr. Gottschall, you're on again.
We're on a roll here, sir. The township held a public bid opening on July 11th for our annual line painting project contract, during which only one bid was received. The lowest and only bid from Alpha Space Control Company Incorporated was in the amount of $134,485. Good news, the engineer's original estimate for this project was $158,000, and as such, those funds have been budgeted within the township's liquid fuel fund. At this point, staff recommends the contract be awarded to Alpha Space Control, again, in the amount of $134,485, and I'd be happy to help answer any questions you may have.
Do we always, do we always get one bidder for this particular work?
That seems to be the going pool of candidates, yes. And good news, again, we've been using Alpha Space for over 20 years, so they have a solid track record with us.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We need a motion to approve awarding a contract for the 2024 Traffic Line Painting Project, the amount of $134,485.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passed. So now we get to subdivision and land development guarantees. Looks like we have three of them, Estates of Forest Hill Extension, Autumn Oaks Phase Estates Extension, and 6452 McCormick Lane Establishing. We have a motion to approve those improvement guarantees.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Subdivision improvement guarantees have passed. So we go to payment of bills for the Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority. Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you, sir. I've reviewed the bills and recommend payment.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the bills will be paid. We have any announcements or comments?
Yes, sir.
From the public? And I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Our next meeting is scheduled. It's not even on here.
Yeah. Monday, August 5th.
Tuesday.
It's Monday. National Night Out.
Oh, National Night Out is on the Tuesday, so.
That's correct.
Monday, August 5th.
That's the reason for the change.
Okay.
I'll make a, make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Motion approved. Meeting is adjourned.